Can we begin in open session? Can you guys just move to session? So is that for Cam, please.
Our president, the visionists, to the power of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have to move on to IOPA meetings. And that is what we're going to do. Public hearing. Public hearing, there's a question for the president, so we have a public hearing for the fourth people here. And the provision of standard driving professional experience. Our university administration teachers and bargaining unit members, parents and community members have the opportunity to discuss whether there is a deficiency textbooks and instructional materials and if the category textbooks and instructional materials were purchased from an approved standards aligned state adoption list. 905 section 9531 and in grades nine through twelve instructional materials were adopted by the law according to the following is this district's duty of the materials and their alignment with the state content standards. As applied section 9531, after the public hearing, the board will vote on resolution number thirteen dash fourteen dash oh three, stating that there is determination whether or not there is a sufficient textbooks and instructional materials for each student at each school on the district. If the board so determines, they will also verify the textbooks and instructional materials are standard aligned and recourses according to law. So, do you have a motion to move that? Just opening the hearing. Does anybody have a comment? Sorry, but you might. But is there any more information?
I think we've had a given.
All right, then we'll move on to public hearing for the adoption of pupil textbooks and instructional materials for the structured English and Meridian program for the school year twenty three to twenty fourteen. The public hearing will be held on September twenty fourth, twenty thirteen, at six P M in Palm Oriented by a school district boardroom located at six twenty seven S T M in Central California. During this public hearing, administrative teachers, bargaining leaders, parents and community members will have the opportunity to discuss whether the instructional materials utilized in the structured English and Meridian program as described under proposition two point seven are appropriate. After the public hearing, the board will vote on resolution number thirteen dash fourteen dash oh four, stating their determination whether the instructional materials utilized in the structured English and Meridian program are appropriate. Does anybody want to say anything about that? Have a comment? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. We have to move on to IOPA communications. Okay, it's been regulated, but we have the floor.
Good evening, Dr. Nishino and fellow board members. I would first like to thank the fellow board members that came to the Renaissance tonight last week September the eleventh. Our ASP really appreciates your guys' support. And we'd also like to invite you to the blood drive on October fourth, whether you want to come and donate a pint or two.
Not recorded.
The past two weeks in ASP have been pretty busy getting the festivities for the Renaissance tonight and Santa Paula Week. Santa Paula Week ran rather smoothly. We had a lot of participation in our events that we have, also the rally. And now we're working on the events for homecoming, even though it's a month away, we still want to be prepared for when it comes. It comes after our October break. And also our sports roundup. The football team lost to Santa Paula last Friday, or past Friday, so we lost our helmet, but it wasn't like we lost a huge game, just our pride. Cross country's first league meet is tomorrow, so definitely the start of our championship season, hopefully. And golf league started last week, I believe, also volleyball. They had a game today against Pacifica, and their record is three, three and two, so they're looking like they're going to have a good season. And that's all I have for you guys.
Okay, try to find your update on anything.
We've been meeting with the teachers union and working on some M U agreements, and I think we're very close to being able to add some supports out of the site. So just working on the details with those, but that's exciting.
I'm hoping a little bit on budget for Ford D O has a chance to really talk a little bit about it. This is a very unusual year, a change in the work funding for us in California. Forty years we've not had that change, and the change in the way they give us money. The problem with it is, we don't know how much we're going to get. It's just predicated upon if you have students who are low social economics or kids at D L population. So we're trying to figure out what that looks like. Also, it's an eight-year process before you get all the financing. So they tell you you need so much, it's like twelve percent a year, so they're trying to give it all. We don't know what that looks like. They haven't decided what it looks like yet. This is the accountability piece, making sure that the money does follow the kid, but it was entirely followed. So if you're a low socioeconomic student or you're a D L student, then the money should follow you, you should get additional resources. And the problem with some of this formula is that on top of that is a tax. All your parents, your students, and your parents are paying a tax called Prop thirty. That money does come to the state of California for education. It's a five-year tax, which means after five years it goes away unless the voters reapprove it come now. We're not sure if that happens, so we have to be very careful not spending recurring money, one-time dollars. Five years is basically one-time dollars. You're finding out when you become moms and dads kids, and you find out there's only so much money. You don't have a job, you don't have money, can't pay your daughter, many things happen. So a little concerned about that. We're concerned about some of the debt we have encountered. We had an issue with our roofs, with middle school especially, for the last twelve years. And so we've asked people to spend general fund money to repair their roofs because it states away the maintenance and repair money they used. So that was about one point seven million dollars that we obligated condition for that roof. And so we have a lot of other needs in this district, including air conditioning, and other roofs that leak, and windows that don't hold the heat in or cold in it as well. So there's a lot of needs we have, but that's an obligation that we have to pay off. So all those things, kids call debt. Those are debt where you spend something, it's a debt. When you pay it off and you pay that obligation off, you don't have a debt anymore. But it takes a revenue. Revenue is money coming in in order to meet those payments. And you'll find that out as you get older, and hopefully your parents are treating you now because it's a big pain. So I'm going to let Gil talk a little bit about the state predicament, what they're trying to do. It's a huge change. I say that every meeting. This is the most drastic change in education we've had in forty years. Now they're refunding differently, we're going to be testing them, it's all going to be computer generated. And that's where we have to get enough computers in our classroom, enough technology to make sure our kids can take tests. The third piece is that the curriculum is called Common Core, we're talking about that. We're talking about not how to intuit it's core, but why do you think to intuit it's core, what does it take to make that? So they want you to be thinking about these, and they're literally different than it was before. All those three things in education makes it very, not difficult, but precarious and challenging for us to make sure our kids learn everything. It is changing technology. Two years are going to give us different results. Three years, that's what I'm saying, four years, three different major changes in the way we think of it. And our teachers are trying to zero for it, our principals are trying to zero for, we're trying to zero for it. It's a very challenging time for all educators. So we hope that you're patient, and you should also do your part and study hard, students, so that you make challenges. It's difficult out in that world from having an education. Not only about this field, it's about do you have knowledge to make the right choice? Do you have the knowledge to make the right choices? Everything on the internet isn't always true, is it? Is everything on the internet can be true? No. And that's what they're trying to say, don't just take things for granted. Think about what it is, they're trying to explain to you, persuade you, and then make a good decision on the knowledge you have. Gil, anything about money I could add?
I think you've got most of it. I'm going to leave you with one member, Dr. Nishino. My, this is my second board meeting, and my first one talking about what's going to happen with what is known as the local control funding formula. And in our board meeting on August twenty seventh, what we sunshine there was basically a projection of what we are estimating here to get here in the district based on our student population and different grade structure. What I intend to do in the future with, in terms of how we deal with budget issues, is to ensure that our stakeholders have, we ensure transparency in all of the things that we do with respect to the budget. So I think you'll see that as an item, more of a simple way of trying to describe what the budget is in terms of non-technical approach so that all of our stakeholders understand what that is and how we are going to implement the local control funding formula over the next couple of years. There is always a temptation to say, well, you said we were going to have about one point eight or two million dollars in new monies, and if I take the value of one percent, which I know, I divide that by what that dollar figure is, then we are entitled to X amount of, of principal salary. What we are looking for is to take a balanced approach as we go through the next, probably the next year, which is critical because we are in a transition year of L C F. And what you'll see is, as we approach all of the different decisions that we have to make, we're going to be doing that in a structured, balanced way that gives validity to considerations in, for our certificated staff, our classified staff, addressing issues with the general fund itself and our long-term debt. So it will be something that you will see our approach to try to take care of all of these issues in an incremental way. So I'm looking forward to presenting that. Probably at first interim, we'll have a better picture as we go through and more of the local control funding formula unfolds at the county level. State and county level, and here at our level.
Okay, Michael.
In my report, Dr. Nishino has asked me to respond to the issue that has been brought up regarding students at high school level or twelfth graders and our deficiency in credits. So I would like to address that in my report. Dr. Nishino, she has asked me to do so. I must confess, I am beyond concern for these students who have yet to meet the graduation requirements. Honestly, I am livid. In fact, more appropriately, outraged. But this has happened to these students as unconscionable as they could have been avoided. To address why I believe this to be so, I would like to cover the following points. Number one, I would like to set my report in context. Number two, I would like to give the rationale as to why we have moved towards a high standard and high expectation. Thirdly, I'd like to identify the depth of the issue as I have been addressing it. Then finally, I would like to move to the solution to the issue. Let me talk about the context, the setting in which I'm giving in my report. I'd like to make it very clear that this is not applying to all of the students at the high school level. I'm just focusing on some of the students, and no doubt, as I look at, scan the audience, some of these students are here. Also, I would like to say that for some of these students, they probably come from households where perhaps parents do not speak English fluent language, or parents who have two or three jobs, and therefore, these are parents who will perhaps not attempt to darken the portals of our high school. They pretty much trusted us to do what is right by their students, by their child. So those are the students I'm addressing. Secondly, in this report, I would like it very clear that I'm not at all implying that the adults involved in what I'm going to say do not care. In fact, they do. But there are two kinds of caring. An adult can care and have high expectations for a student, in which case, an adult would say, you know, I'd like you to take this challenging course because you're capable of doing it. Or an adult can care and say something like, you know, I really don't want you to take that particular course because I don't want to set you up for failing. With sometimes, it's a code word to say, I don't really have high expectations for you. So the point is, I'm not saying adults don't care. So that's the context in which I would like my presentation to be understood. So let me talk about the rationale for raising the standards and expectations. I'd like it very clear that we have no choice. We have no choice. The Common Core State Standard sets in each purpose and its mission that every graduating senior has to be ready for college and a career. It didn't say or, it says college and career. That is the goal. That is the standard that has been set by the state, which the state approved twenty twelve. That's the curriculum that we have. Based on that, we made adjustments to the curriculum at the high school. Now, I would like it understood also that the state of California stated that it's not a choice. Because it used to be a choice, you know, we would think, oh, some kids are going to college, and some kids are going to go to a trade school, and therefore, the pathways are different. They made it very clear that that pathway is no longer there. They're implying that all of our students ought to be prepared for college. All of them. That's a state, and forty states in our United States have adopted the same standard. So wherever you go, that is the standard. And this is the reason why we needed to shift our high school curriculum and expectations for all students, not only for those who have been traditionally identified as college bound. Now, what does this mean? In case, this is not fair to some parents here tonight. Unless your child becomes successful in Algebra II, they have been eliminated from taking and applying to a four-year university. I want to repeat that. Unless your child has been successful in Algebra II, you've actually eliminated that child's opportunity to apply to a four-year university. Now, you can go to a community college, that's a rule of the day. I'm just saying that. So what does that mean for us as adults in the system? What that simply means is that I have a responsibility to make sure that all of you, all of you have the best opportunities ahead of you. That we prepare you for what the state says you ought to be prepared for. Unless we do that, we are falling short of our responsibility. Now, whether you go to college or not, that's your choice. Whether you take advantage of that or not, that's your choice. But my responsibility is not to restrict your opportunity in the future so that when you are handed that diploma, you are ready to make the choices that would be right for you. Not because I've restricted it, but because you made that choice what is best for you. The second point, which leads me, the second point leads into the third point, that's the depth of the issue. I did not know, when I started addressing this back in the spring, because that's what's brought up in the spring. I did not know how pervasive and how deep this issue was. In fact, we addressed it during the summer. We offered courses that we never offered in this district to allow students who are not being successful in math to take those courses. And for the most part, a number of them made it so, reducing the responsibility they had to take in the fall. The argument continued that these kids, that these kids still lack, you know, what needs to happen. So I kept digging, digging and digging. And I realized that there were some areas that I suspected because of the research I've done, what's happening. Let me mention three of those. The high school has a high graduation rate, very high graduation rate. However, it is program improvement, something that's not going to happen. If you have a high graduation rate, it means that you should have some students, or most of you students, who are scoring high in the C S Ts. But that's not the case. So as I look at it, I'm wondering, why is that the case? It appears to mean that the goal at the high school has been to graduate kids, at least some of them, and give them whatever courses are necessary, whether they are quality or not, as long as they get a piece of paper and a diploma. That seems to be what I'm noticing. Secondly, I also noticed, especially this came up, the first year I was here, the superintendent gave me charge to say, Michael, take a look at the continuation high school. Because the continuation high school principal was very vocal. She was saying, you know, continuation high schools being used as a dumping ground. There's no criteria, there's no process, and so I addressed it. And what has happened due to that is that it plugged that hole so that only students who really can benefit from the continuing high school were being transferred there. So there's a system now, and there's a process. Thirdly, and this to me is probably a little bit more serious, and this to me gave me the direction that I audiodropped. Since the summer up to this point, I have looked at over thirty transcripts, thirty transcripts. My background is high school counselor, by the way. That's where I came through the ranks. Thirty transcripts. And I can say this without going through details, some of those transcripts did not make sense to me. It didn't make sense to me. I came across one transcript that didn't offer English nine in the ninth grade. That's unexplainable. You can't even defend that. So what I'm saying is this, that as I look at it, look at the transcripts, study them, a number of the issues that the students are facing now started back in the ninth grade. It didn't only happen here. And if some of you are doubling up on math or tripling up on math, okay, that's an issue. That shouldn't happen. Ideally speaking, it shouldn't happen. Why? Because no matter if you raised a standard or not, you still have to meet three years of math. What's happening that it's only now that you have to catch up on math? I'd be very interested in looking at your transcript, what happened, what's the history of your transcript? And again, these are probably parents who wouldn't come. Unlike a college-bound kid, a parent who's educated would come and say, I'd like to know what my kid is being, why my child is being scheduled at this particular class. So that's my suspicion as I look at that, as I look at the student's academic history. Now, let me say where we are with this. And, and I think I shared it already. What I'm recommending is certainly against every fiber of my body. Because there's been a history of giving students courses that lead to nowhere. They get a piece of paper. That piece of paper is something that does not prepare them for college, nor does it prepare them for life. We get them out, they get a piece of paper. So realizing the depth of the issue, realize how expansive and extensive it is. We have started working with the high school principal to provide courses, I have to say this, lead to nowhere, to give you a piece of paper. I'm sorry, that's where we are. And I'm sorry to say also that there are some students, because they're so behind in credit, who probably struggle making it through. The point, however, that needs to happen here is this, as we make those changes, you have a responsibility to put in every effort in order to pass. More than ever before in this district, there has been more options for students to graduate. We've brought in online, there are courses that the principal is offering, tutoring before school, after school. You've got courses in the evening, taught by a couple of the teachers. There are more options for you than you've ever had in the past. You have a responsibility to take that upon yourself, to do everything you can. So you're the only one who can determine whether you're going to make it. Let me end with this, and then I'm going to ask the high school principal to tell you what we have done to deal with this issue. I'm going to read this article too. This came out of the Star Friday, July, July fifth, twenty thirteen. And this is a real story of a graduate from Fillmore High School. Her name is Angelica Amescua. Angelica Amescua had told this story many times, but her message was so compelling that she was involved, she was invited to Washington DC to speak to the local initiatives, support corporation this month. That was back in the day. Amescua was one of three students chosen to attend the conference, the nonprofit that deals with rural areas, rural areas. People like her, people like her story. She came from living in one room and having to study. The family had to allow for that. If the student, if the student Angelica Amescua wanted to complete her studies at night, when her farm worker parents were sleeping, her family had to be accommodating. She's quoted, "My parents and siblings were very understanding and would not mind sleeping with the lights on," she said. Amescua said, "The family came to the U S looking for a better life when she was eleven, and that the only places that could find, she could find, they could find to live were in the homes with only one room for the entire family." And then she says this, "My families, looking for a place to live, come to the United States for better opportunities." Many told in high school. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm cutting this off. Attend the conference. Each speaker came from housing in one of the community development corporation across the United States. "We wanted a story about how people are being benefited by the program," said Michael Dustra, a program assistant with a division of the nonprofit that deals with rural areas. And then I continue picking up, I read it already. "People like her story, she came from living in one room and having to study, the family had to allow for that. If the student is young, etc., etc.," and then Amescua said, "The family came to the U S looking for a better life when she was eleven, and that the only places they could find to live were in homes with only one room for the entire family. Many families looking for a place to live, come to the United States for better opportunities. Many farm workers can't do anything but share a room in someone's home, house, but once they have a decent home, they can excel. Cabrillo Development gave us the potential we have," she said. A graduate student in Chicano Studies at CSU, Northridge, Amescua, was told in high school by a counselor that she wasn't college material because of her limited English. I wish I can say this is the only story I've heard this way. I've heard others, and I've asked them to come to the board, but they would not. It's a low expectation, low expectation of some of our students. She said, "The negative, the negative assessment motivated her to work harder. I look at it as a blessing to have the opportunities I've had. It started with my parents, who had an appreciation of education," Amescua said. "After the discouragement from the counselor, it was really important to be able to go to CSUN." "The college has an office for first generation students from low income families. Her first summer with them opened doors of opportunities," she said. It's hard. It's hard when you hear stories like this. Wish I can say it's an exception. It is not. It is not. And let me tell you, one student, one student should not have to go through something like this. We have been entrusted to do the best for our kids, and I'm sorry, we have failed her. We have failed this lady. And that's what we're trying to plug. So yes, we'll give you the courses that you, you need to graduate. But I wish that piece of paper will need something. And I'm afraid this is not the only generation of students that will have to experience this. Probably will need two or three more years of giving courses just to get kids through. That's not right. That is not right. Mr. Russell, could you please mention to them what we have to say? Good evening, everybody, and I have to say that I really appreciate the fact that all of you are here. What it says to me is that you care about your future, you're concerned about your future. I've been talking with you individually and in group basis. You have made some passionate pleas saying that we need some help. And we really, really appreciate that, and the conversations have been very honest. And I really appreciate the fact that you're interested in your future. That is inspiring and powerful. Every day, I have met quite a few people, especially in the last few days. The conversations have been very painful. Some of the things that I have heard from students is that I can't do it. I can't do it. Ladies and gentlemen, you're looking at the principal who's been told he can't do it. Looking at a superintendent who's been told he cannot do it. We have all statements in this room who were told, you cannot do it. I hated my French teacher because he hated, he came, he was from France, he came to Africa to teach a class. I take a look at him, he didn't look like he liked black kids. And then I refused to speak French, and I speak English, I speak Arabic, I speak Ethiopian, I speak Eritrean, I'm learning Spanish. I don't want to speak a word of French because one teacher did not seem like he was inspiring to me. Please do not listen to people who tell you that you're not capable. Because this morning, I met with kids, and I said, well, so we have this plan for you. Do you want to go there? And they said, no, I'm actually doing a good job in Algebra II. I don't want to be moved. These kids did not know something about themselves. They found out that they are more capable than they were told. They were told they were no good before. They found out that they are really better than they've been told. They've been told you can't do it. What's happening to these poor kids? What's happening to you poor kids? This patronizing, this condescending culture of low expectations. Yes, we came in and we said these kids deserve better. Yes, we came in and we found people who could be mentored with a C grade. I came in and there is a mentor with a C grade. How do you get to be a mentor and you have a C grade? You should be mentor, you need a mentor. How to improve that grade? I have never seen a situation where you're a C student and how are, then I should bring in teachers who are the lousiest teachers so they could mentor the teachers? Let's bring the lousiest people to champion these great teachers. What could my teachers benefit from a lousy C type of a teacher? I want the best and brightest to mentor my students. I want the best and brightest to mentor my teachers. I don't want, I don't want to look up somebody who's a C. I want to be led by people who are the best in their profession. And I wouldn't do that to you. I want the best and brightest to mentor you. C students should be in the classroom getting mentor. And then there's this idea of, well, if you're a C student, you should be free to go get some lunch. What lunch? Your priority is not to get lunch, my friend, you're a senior. You should be concerned about your future. You should be hustling for some tutorial class available and open for you. Ask any teacher, their doors are open. They have three kids, four kids. If I'm so motivated, I'll be there in that classroom. Lunch, I will eat it with the teacher. I have a priority. I had a conversation with a student, and he goes, I was having so much, I was looking forward so much to being a senior and having all the fun. I said, are you serious? Your priority is to have fun as a senior? Are you serious? Well, I'm sorry, I'm not the fun department. I'm trying to prepare you for reality, man. I'm preparing you for reality, staring me and staring you. I'm sorry, this is not the fun department, this is the wrong place. That conversation took place in my office. What I'm saying to you, ladies and gentlemen, is I know who you are. You're much, much more capable than people are telling you. You are hugely, hugely capable. You're here tonight, you're here together. You're saying, I need some help. I hear you. We've actually made some decisions because we want to respond to you. Mr. Johnson made some powerful, powerful statement saying that this is not just limited to now, it goes way back. But we cannot say, well, that's not my problem. We're actually addressing it. We actually spent, you know how late we talked last night? Eleven PM, eleven PM, eleven PM. Every night, reflecting, figuring out ways to support you. Because we care. If we did not care, we would not care. We would not have these kind of conversations. You know how many evenings, or how many days, or how many sessions I have with you guys individually? One student at a time. Some kid, actually, a student, actually stood me up because I had this very painful conversation, and I said to him, could you please come to my office, I want to help you out? So I wait for the student to show up. Student doesn't show up. So the next day, I said for him. I said, how am I supposed to help you? Here's the principal of the school. I have a thousand kids to serve, but you don't even show up. You're a senior, you have things to do. You've got to be reaching out to me, I'm available. So we talk. Because I pulled him out from the classroom, he stood me up. I told him, you stood me up. I have a thousand kids to serve. I have ninth graders aching to transition to high school. Ladies and gentlemen, we will help you out. We will overcome this situation. I happen to know you individually, I happen to like you, I happen actually to believe in you. I am so proud of the students who told me today, I do not want to leave Algebra II because I know now that I'm capable of being successful in that classroom. You did not even know that about you. You did not know that. Now you know. So please do not allow people with jobs who have gone places to let you know because somehow you're not capable of, you are hugely, otherwise I would not be a principal. I would not be speaking English. I would not be applying to all these jobs. I'm from Africa, I'm here because I worked my tail off despite the fact that everybody told me you're going nowhere. Everybody. I can tell you members of my family who told me, what's the matter with me? Why do you have to speak English all the time? Who do you think you are? English is serving me very well right now because I'm speaking in a language in another country because I spoke English. When you learn, good things happen to you. I had also teachers who had high expectations of me. I had a principal who had high expectations of me, and that's why I'm standing in front of you. Ladies and gentlemen, I believe in you. What we have done, Mr. Johnson and I, at the direction of the superintendent, is that we have decided to avail a business math. This period would be offered, period one. This class would be offered, period one. Some students have actually applied to be members of this classroom. We're also availing seven to eight math. We're also availing three to four math to support you. Lunch, we will avail it. Here's the place for you, please, ladies and gentlemen. You are very capable. I know who you are, I know what you do on weekends, I know what kind of jobs you do. I know who you are. I know you individually, you are good, wonderful, hardworking kids. It's just that do not internalize what people are telling you that somehow you're not good enough. You are better. No, you should not ever, ever believe them because you are much better than that, than what they're telling you. Do not believe these naysayers because it might be actually tinged with a cultural low expectation. They should be, they should be asking themselves why they seem to believe that about certain kinds of kids. They should ask themselves before they go to bed. They should ask themselves if they would send their own children to the same school they subject our children to. They should ask, would you send your child to the same school? If you do not, then that classroom is not good enough for anybody. If it's not good for your own child. How many people used to go to Fillmore High School? Where are they? How many people do we lose every year, every year? What, where do they go? Where do they go? What happens to these people? Does anybody even call them back? What can we do if you're a restaurant, if you're a business, and you're losing customers? So, we will be working with you. I just want you to know that. We are very available to help you out. We got your back. You will be graduating. The more you graduate, the better it is for Fillmore High School. We got your back. One student at a time, we will talk to you, we will take care of you, we will tutor you, we will do whatever it is to walk you through because that's what we're all about. We're all about, all the way from that superintendent to this assistant superintendent to this board. We're all about supporting you, one student at a time. Please do not lose hope because we're here to serve you. I'm very proud of you that you're here to say I care about my education. I'm very, this is your democratic first amendment right. So I don't want you to ever think that somehow I'm disappointed. No, I'm actually very proud that you're here because you care. Thank you. And I just want to conclude. And let me just conclude, and this time I'm gonna address the parents in conclusion. We are where we are with your child. I have yet to meet a parent who did not want something better for their child. No matter where they are, whether they are a doctor, a lawyer, or somebody who's a former, they always want something better for their child. We are where we are with your child right now. If you have younger children, you have younger children going through the system. Please, please, do what you can. There's help available for you. You're a migrant parent, there's a migrant office where you can talk to them to keep track of where your child is. Do not wait until they're in the twelfth grade to visit the counseling office. Ask, are those appropriate classes for my child? They are more than willing to help you to do that. So, Dr. Nishina, I end my report.
First of all, how, um, like a parent, I see a lot of students, are your parents here? They're just Spanish speaking only? Are there any Spanish speakers? May I shake a shoulder hand? ¿Cuáles padres están aquí que no hablan nada de inglés?
Levanten la mano, por favor. Si preferían que se comunicaran aquí en español y entendieran, mejor en el español.
Would you mind translating? Is I, is I speak Spanish? Do you want to translate for me?
I can't, I'm not certified. You're not certified, you may have certified.
If you don't, if you're not saying what I'm saying, I will know and I'll stop you. So, um, basically, I'm, I'm, what I'm going to say is pretty short. But basically, I see a lot of students in this, in this room, and I know that this matter is of great concern to you. But I was here forty-three years ago. And I, and I went to Fillmore, and I never had biology, and I never had algebra, I had math nine. And this is how it affected me. Going. There were quite a few, there were quite a few students that I went to school with, and we were, we didn't need to take those classes. Because we would never go to college.
Que cuando ella estaba viendo la escuela, no tomó muchas clases porque no eran requeridos para tomar las clases. Y también personas le dijeron que ella nunca iba a ir al colegio. Y eso le afectó en su vida.
So what I'm saying is that, um, I wish, I wish I was not educators that were as passionate, is what they're saying, that would have said, we'll help you. Don't let somebody tell you that. No, you do need the classes. And whether you go to college or not, that will always serve you. It will serve you. It's just something that, for me, that it's something that you... To have the exposure to that does not hurt. It's raising the bar. I'm so tired for, for this district to just, you know, to take classes to be able to graduate. You want to learn, you want to go higher, you want to do the best you can. Not all of you will go to college, but then again, a lot of you will not go to college right away. But a lot of you will decide that later on you do want to go, and that will serve you. This will only serve you and help you.
Dice que, yo le gustaría tener una persona administradora que la apoyaran y que le pusieran retos enfrente para llegar a otro nivel más alto académico. Para el un día de mañana ir al colegio, a la universidad, para continuar con sus estudios. Y que los administradores aquí valorizan la educación y que por eso el intento era elevar el nivel académico.
Which is very trying, very hard to raise the standards to these students. And, um, it's, uh, I was so happy to hear what you said, that there's some students there saying, hey, I can do this, and they're deciding to stay. You know, I give them props, one hundred percent. And there was a comment made last, at the last board meeting where they said, we, we have failed these kids by not preparing them. And therefore, we should let them take these classes so they can graduate. That statement, for me, was profound, to say that we have not prepared you. And that should have happened a long time ago, not just in high school. That should have been happening all along. And like I said, it, it, it affected me, it, I... And it's funny, because in talking to girlfriends that went to school with me, acquaintances that went to school that had the same thing happen to them, it's, it may not affect you so much now, but down the road, it, it will. It does, it hurts. But because you, one thing like that just changes the course of your entire life. It just really changes your course, and it, um, anyway, I'm done with that. But I hope most of you will try at least make the effort to do that. I'm done.
I was waiting for the part about the free lunches.
No.
Dice la señora que el intento de la mesa y de los administradores era de elevar el nivel académico, pero que en varias comunicaciones e intercambios con diferentes personas ella escuchaba que esta mesa, los administradores, les falló a los alumnos, a los estudiantes. Y que la preparación de muchas de estas clases no, no falló en este momento, pero ha fallado atrás a través de los años. Y que la expectativa de elevar el nivel académico era para que las personas tuvieran opciones para continuar con su educación. Y eso fue el intento de cierta expectativa del distrito.
And I think I will say just a little bit more, just, just so you know a little bit of my background so that they can understand too. My father was a farm worker, he came over in the Basero program. I speak the word English, I just speak English as I went into kinder. So I, I know where some of you, not all of you have that experience, but I know, I know where you've been. But I do know that your parents, or at least, I've got to believe that this is what they want. My father always used to say, you know, education is what's going to get you success and it's going to bring you ahead. He only went through the third grade, worked hard all his life. He wanted it for me, he didn't really know how to get it for me, he depended on the school. He wanted it for me. He didn't really know how to get it for me. He depended on the school to bring me through. And unfortunately, now looking back, and when you see that, you think, you know, it was, that failed me back then, so, or at least I feel that way.
Dice la señora que su padre fue placero. Que el énfasis de eso tampoco fue la educación. Dice que el sistema le falló a ella, y ella no quiere que les falle a ustedes.
Did you graduate from college?
I went two years.
Same here, I'm in the same position.
It, it brings it back. Hey, I mean, you get there and you're not prepared even then.
You know what they call the, when I came to T S M, they call the hole, they call it the oil. Pretty near in the bonds, they call the hole when I was going to school. The oil in Spanish. No, just nothing but Latin English in there.
Just got to change. And then to see this, to regret that forty years later and see that that happened again, that was horrible. It was horrible to regret that.
Well, I like, I like to get up, man, when you get to town.
Excuse, a big comment. Didn't you say in the article that that girl was a graduate student at Cal State Orange? So it didn't stop her. The comment was made, but she propelled forward.
It's an important special right now. And still, your turn. You want me to respond? No, no, no. Uh, I think, um... Prior to that, we're under communication, we're under my public comments on the agenda items, my agenda items petition. It's in the finding place where there's a school board that will prohibit the board from acting on issue, not included on the agenda. How a request may be made for discussions as specific topics, such as putting meetings among recognition by the president of the board. Please come forward and identify yourselves before speaking. The Board of Education reserves a right to make a time of three minutes or less per individual.
There's a few more parts here. There's a few more parts out here.
Okay, Sandra, let's, versus?
Right first. We're all together.
Good evening. Dr. Nishina, Michael Johnson, Tom Chevrolet, and Fillmore members. Tonight we represent dedicated professionals that educate the students of Mountain Vista School under the administration of Mr. John Wilber. As a staff, we are committed to the students we serve. We continue to hold high expectations of ourselves and of our students. We are reminded daily of our task to educate the future generation. Those future adults who will be faced with different opportunities and challenges that we might have faced growing up. Fillmore Unified School District is in transition. As in any transition, problems become apparent and need to be resolved. First, Common Core curriculum is being written by Fillmore elementary teachers to align to the eleven-year-old Open Core program. Second, there is no ELD curriculum, yet lesson plans are being required. Clearly, these concerns need to be addressed immediately. Although we do have a professional day to implement, uh, pardon me, a professional duty to implement the curriculum, we question whether it is also our responsibility to write the curriculum we deliver. One can ask, how is it reasonable to then spend additional hours rewriting our curriculums into a lesson plan format? What is the limit to our professional day? While Mountain Vista teachers move forward with implementing Common Core this year and continue to prepare our students for their future, there is an urgent need for curriculum support and training for the Mountain Vista staff now. After all, the future sits before us every day. Respectfully, Mountain Vista teachers.
Okay, David, I guess you're...
Yes, thank you. Well, I'm also your coach, so thanks a lot. Thanks a lot, man. My name is D L S. I reside here in Fillmore. And I just want you to know that I think my son, my daughter, failed ninth grade. Um, just let you know, my son, he's Tyler Skelton, the senior right now. And just let you know what kind of grades he has, even though some are easiest, uh, easy, but not easy. Of course, athletics A, A S B student A plus, economics A, physics, physics B, uh, word literature A. And then this, he got a D in, um, math analysis. Um, I think he got a D in math analysis because I think in geometry, I think that's where he got failed. Um, I'm going to my daughter, Caroline, she's a sophomore. And, um, uh, last year this time, we had backseat night. And I, I came out of the classroom from Miss Burns, geometry. And, uh, this twenty-five was stereo side, uh, which, you know, uh, I got to know pretty good. And he says, "How's the teacher?" And I said, "Well, it's only been a couple months, I don't know." And so throughout the, throughout the year, the semester, she was doing no good. So I went to talk to Mr. Messman. I said, "Mr. Messman, is there any, can you help me transfer to another teacher?" Because that's what they did to Tyler. And so we were like, "You want me to transfer to the other teacher?" He, he got A in that geometry the next semester. So, um, uh, you know, she failed, uh, that geometry last year. Went to summer school, had computer, uh, what's her name in class? Uh, passed economics and, uh, had a computer class. Uh, and she, she got a B, you know. What I'm trying to say is, uh, if, if kids don't want to fail these ninth graders, then why do we have a teacher like Miss Burns in that classroom where she even says she has a reputation? You know, she, she tells me, or tells everybody in class that was in there, she has a reputation not having, um, you know, whatever, I don't know. But I talked to Caroline, and she says, "Oh yeah, this girl failed. Oh, this girl, this guy failed. Oh, this kid failed. Yeah, this, this girl's not doing. Oh, she's in soccer right now." You know, she is following, and, uh, the, the soccer coach, um, Homer, uh...
Martina.
Martina, yeah. She wants to see the grades for every, all the girls. Well, this year, I don't know what happened, but now she has, um, F in algebra two. You know why? Because the first two weeks, she was in geometry class. And because she passed geometry class in summer, she had to wait till she, she got into algebra two. So with two weeks going by, sitting in geometry, and I went to talk to a young lady counselor. I don't know if you still remember, I don't know what's her name. Anyways, I says, "Hey, can you get Caroline into algebra two?" "Oh yeah, we can do it right away." "Well, why wasn't it done two weeks earlier, right on the school week start?" So what I'm trying to say here is that, it's kind of, I don't know. I went, I went to the same thing as Virginia did, here in, in Cecily School. And, uh, I thought I was prepared when I was at Cal State Orange. Two years trying to, trying to be a phys ed teacher, you know, and I went to an admin. Oh my God, admin, ooh. Real hard, real hard class, but watching the picture, but anyways, uh, anyways, uh... Uh, I'm, I'm hoping that you guys can, you can, can talk to Miss Burns and say, you know, "Caroline says that notes, you know, note saying on you, everyone. She says that all she does is note, you know. Can she, can't Miss Burns talk to the kids? Can't they say, you know, um, you know, Miss Burns go to the counselor and say, "This kid isn't doing too good. Let's give him some, you know, if they can't, if they can't come, if they can't come back for themselves, let's give them, let's give the, uh, uh, tell the teacher, hey, uh, you know, this, go to the counselors, this, this student's not doing very well, let's give him some help." Instead of, because my daughter, she was just, she was waiting for somebody to get some help, you know. I don't know why, you know, she seems like she's, uh, you know, you know, I don't know. She looks like she, she could talk all day long, you know, but I don't know why she didn't want to come to me or come to somebody besides us. You know, because I talked to her and it's gone now. And it's gone now, come on. I did go to school, you know, two, three times, but I don't, I don't know why, but, 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 but. Miss, you guys gotta talk to Miss Burns, that's all I ask. You guys gotta talk to her, okay? Please. There's a lot of kids that are failing that test. And once they get to algebra two, I don't think they even know it's gone now.
And thanks for your...
Hi, I'm Jessica Maza. I went to high school here, graduated class level seven. And after I went to UC Davis, where I got my B S in swimming. And, uh, you know, I was encouraged by, my, my counselor was Miss Karen Ashen, and I was encouraged to take harder classes and just to challenge myself, so, um, I feel that, you know, these kids that are saying like, "I don't want to," or algebra two shouldn't be a requirement set like right now where I'm about to graduate. I feel that if we're gonna implement that to start off, okay, let's start with the freshmen because these students already went through this broken system, and they're being forced to, um, to, to do this requirement, and it's not, um, I, I feel it's not fair. I mean, granted, I'm pretty sure a lot of these kids are capable of doing it, but they've already gone through this broken system, and I feel that that is totally not fair for them.
What's going on, everybody? My name's Paul. I understand what you guys are trying to do for your kids, you know? But at the same time, you guys gotta look at it as, you guys are crushing their dreams. At the end of the junior year, I know you guys want to learn, raise the bar a little bit, but at the end of the junior year, they're looking forward to be, yeah, coming to see me, seeing this ball, you know? We get their class ring. All the parents, I'm pretty sure all the parents already ordered all the kids' rings, paid for pictures. You guys gotta think about that. They're kind of struggling, but yeah, we're still sitting here trying to give our kids the best thing, and it makes them happy. I graduated in '01. My daughter's a senior. Yep, two little ones. I worked my butt off to raise my family. Yeah, I know you guys, because, but my daughter, she spent her whole summer going to college, to turn college. She missed one day. She was there, we lived here in Fillmore, we joked, every morning she'd enter. We'd wait, and we went to the beach, my kids, the beach, wait till she got out of school, came back home. Every day we took, so she was on the college path. So there it helps her out, you know? She has got to understand, crushing their dreams. They should have brought this up last year, so that way they'd afford, when they're coming to see you, they'd be like, "Hey, we know, it's gonna go on," and, you know? You guys gotta think about it. I don't think it's right. A lot of parents, I'm pretty sure a lot of parents are losing a lot of money for their dresses, their yearbooks, their classmates, pictures. You guys gotta think about that. A lot of people are struggling, a lot of, a lot of single parents are struggling, but they want to give the best to their kids. So, you know, you guys really think about it. I'm only thirty years old. My daughter's seventeen. My daughter's six, my son's gonna be five. My kids come first, and I understand education's good for them. I mean, you guys gotta cut these kids a break this year. I think you guys should. I'll be up for you too, though. Thank you.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Nishina. So you guys might remember me from prior times. I got some information this time. I have one U K and position sign students explaining what's going on, and asking them what classes they have. A lot of students told me, "Oh, I have, um, algebra one, and they're juniors." So I'm in a situation where I have to cook two years on math, and it's pretty hard for me because I'm really bad at math. And I'm not saying like you guys are saying that I can't do it, maybe I could do it. It's just that I know I'm not good at math. I can't say, oh, I'm a fly. I know I can't fly. But, um, here's a petition for Lord Lesson. And for seniors.
Excuse me, what is your name again?
On the end.
Have you asked for help, Mike?
I asked for help, but I work, and I have O P, and then I'm trying to go to, um, class after school, so I'm really busy. So I, I get help sometimes from my friends, and they get out actual amount. And I also have, uh, the overall grades for, uh, three periods of one algebra class and for the other two periods. I have it in green, people have S. I have capacity right now, and then below the people have Ds. Right now, so far in, um, algebra two, we're still doing, um, uh, algebra one, like reviewing the body. People are already struggling with it. And, um, I also had a D just to show that they're struggling with it right now. As they keep on wanting to advance, it's gonna get harder, so people are gonna be feeling even worse. And you know, I have a D, and I'm trying. I still gotta go over to my home, to my home, but I just wanna be here, like, bring us attention that people struggle with stuff. And, um, this algebra thing is, um, it's like, like you was saying, um, I don't know his name, but, um, last year, it's crushing dreams. I want to be a Marine. I've been wanting this since I've been a freshman. And it's not that I want to college, college is cool. Anything, I would like to go get a better education. It's just that I don't think it's my thing. I can go to art school, I'm a good artist, I know myself. And, um, from zooming, geometry, I mean, algebra two, graduate. If I want, um, graduate, it's gonna stop me from going to art school or going to some Marines. It's just, um, crushing my dream. So it's just, it's...
So in, in your eyes, is that totally out of the question? You just, in your head, you cannot pass algebra two? Is that what you're telling me?
It's difficult. You...
I know it's difficult, but is it out of the question for you? Is it out of the question? Do you think in your head there's no way you could pass algebra two?
Honestly, I doubt it. I thought geometry S, both submissions. I passed algebra one, D, both submissions. I'm not prepared for this class, and I know, and I...
I know now's not question and answer, but I gotta ask. Um, Mr. Johnson, that class that was given over the summer, was that offered to the high school kids?
Yes, it was. We had a list of kids. The counselor said that you needed to make up for it.
You weren't in that class?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't complete it all.
Why didn't you complete it all?
So I, like I said, I've worked, I've been working, like, summer I was working like forty-eight hours. So I was working a lot, and, um, it's, like, I mean, I need a job. I need to get my phone. I need to pay other things. I need to buy car tires. I need to pay gas. I need help on my parents. They both work in the field. And I haven't seen them since I was a little kid, struggling, so I kind of want to help out my parents a lot. So I, I have time to study and everything, and it's really important. It's just that there's other things that I gotta focus on too.
And I'm not gonna minimize what you, what you have, because I, I'm not in your shoes. But you want it to happen more, the more you, education you get, and people that you go to Marines or not, it's all gonna help you. I mean, to me, that's more important than the tires, law. It's more important than the phone. I'm not, I mean, in my eyes, if I were your parent, that's what I would want from you. I would want you to do that. I, I know my dad worked in the field, it's the same thing, and I do understand that. And I'm not trying to, to minimize that, show you at all, because I know ultimately you have to make your own choice. But I would think that your parents, if they had the choice to pick, that's what they ask me. Just out of curiosity.
Also, I had to have this paper. It's a, a test everybody took, um, I think it's, uh, seniors. They took it in the beginning of the year to see if you were ready for algebra two. The score today, um, the, um, I mean, the high school was a forty, I mean, not a test, it was out of forty-five. Um, I was in a highlight, people that got it, that you see good. There was only two people, twenty-five and twenty-six. That's it. Everybody else has spun to death, so a lot of people aren't ready for it. And throwing something like that, or last year, I think it's incorrect, because also, I talked to, um, another student that goes to college. She told me that as a, um, as a freshman, you get certain requirements that you have to meet to graduate. And then, let's say I'm a, uh, junior in college, um, my requirements stay the same, even if a lower freshman, getting the requirements. And our options stay the same, just because they were the same, our... and our options should stay the same, just because they were the same, our freshman year. And that's how I was shooting through, we don't have any options. And, um, honestly, me and myself, I didn't think about going to Son of Paul High School. I just, um, it's coming to an end soon, and I also talked to students, some close friends of mine, they don't wanna listen anymore. They think about dropping out because they're struggling. And, um, my little sister, I've been teaching her to drive instead of my dad, and she told me the other day, oh, teach me how to drive, I wanna, um, learn how to drive before next year, and I saw the wire. She goes, oh, because if they don't teach the parameters, they don't have any options? I'm the best son of Paul, 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 so I don't wanna not graduate, so. Just bring attention to that.
Do you know how that sounds? Seriously, I mean, you know how that sounds? I mean, I, I know, I, I know what, what you're doing, and I know that, yes.
Well, do you need these petitions played back?
No, yes, you,
Hey, Gabby Vivian?
Hello, my name is, uh, Gabriela, who's, um, behalf of the Algebra II requirement. Um, because of the lack of math class choices, many students are confused and in danger of not graduating. Um, if seniors are allowed to opt out of Algebra II as a solution, my question to you is how many days in classroom hours have been lost? And how is the school district going to make up the lost academic hours? I am a senior, and I need answers, and so does a class of twenty-four children. I made a promise to my parents that I would graduate, and I plan to fulfill it, where I will be able to, if I can, if I'm able to. I currently have a D. I need to graduate. I take promises seriously, and I, I can't let my parents know.
Brenda Vivian? Slow marching, I'm sorry. Brenda, Monica Brenda?
Well, I'm Brenda Martinez. I am one of the seniors that, that are already, still not graduating this year. In addition to the many, to many, to the many concerns of my fellow classmates, I am also concerned with the leadership at our school. And in my eyes, I didn't, I didn't supposed to provide, provide help, assistance, support, care for, for those under the leadership. This is not the case at Thelmore High School. The principal at Thelmore High School is not the leader that we need. I am an English language learner, and have struggled at times throughout my, my time at Thelmore High School, along with other Spanish teachers. I approached to Mr. Mespin, in seeking support. We asked Mr. Mespin to help us establish a program where we would have access to computers. Many of us do not have this luxury at home, our computers are not always accessible to, to us at school. Mr. Mespin's response was not characteristic of leader, of a leader, and not partic, particular as a leader that we require in largely the Spanish community at Thelmore High School. Mr. Mespin said that it was not his job to start such a program. His response was blunt and very short. We are at school that day with a feeling of discontent, discontent, knowing that the person in place to lead our, our school does not care about our needs or helping us achieve our goal. This is just one issue that has been dismissed by our principal. In researching his track record, we are very concerned with the future of our school. I would like to pose a question to all the school members. How successful would it be at your job without access to computer, without access to a smartphone, or any other technological device? I entrusted the school board to do everything in power, in your power, to put Thelmore back in the right track. I never did not become mistaken, so you would be correct there. I have no doubt in my mind that you, the school board, will correct this error.
Okay, Andrea Hernandez?
Hello, everybody, my name is Andrea Hernandez. Um, communication is very important for us, and we haven't been officially informed of anything about the graduation requirements changes. Our parents, and also us, haven't been informed. We haven't received any information about our options. I'm currently taking Algebra II, and I have a C. I'm like, struggling. I get a lot of help, but it's hard, and I just wanna graduate. Since I was a freshman, yeah. Like Brenda said. I was an EOD, I was an EOD student. And yes, I went through discrimination of a teacher. When I was in Algebra II, I was working hard. She, she even told me once that it wasn't gonna work for me, that basically I wasn't good enough. She preferred to help another girl because she was prettier than me, when she had a neck and I had a D. And yes, I talked to my mom. Yeah, she wants to talk to the office, and guess what? Didn't do anything. She still was there, her. Since that's here, that's when she got out. She got to pull my hair once, and nobody did anything.
The teacher did?
Yes, the teacher did. I'm not disrespectful, I don't answer back, but I showed her that I was good enough to succeed in life. Yes, I'm in Algebra II now, still struggling, getting help because for me it's hard. And thus, the only excuse many, even teachers say, she's an EOD. Do they know? If they, I can understand what they say? Yeah, I've been here for almost seven years, and yes, I understand more now. I wanna graduate. And also my other classmates. What about the geometry students? It's hard, it is. And we're, we are good enough, but we want a chance. We want an opportunity to graduate together, not just some of them. Yeah, we need help, and I know a lot of my friends, classmates, they have been getting it. But some of them, it's hard for them because of all the frustration of the test, and I'm one of them. Yeah, I get frustrated, I study hard, in the moment of the test, yeah, I forget about it. I work hard, I'm still working hard because I wanna get there. I feel like we're in the dark when nobody can help us. Where we don't have support of anybody. And our parents that don't speak English, just because of that, many people don't listen to them. We're equal. Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter if we're Hispanic or anything. We wanna succeed in life. And yeah, our rate of being Latinos going to universities is low. But how, how are we gonna change that, dude? We don't have support. Yes, I know, I'm mad, I'm like, frustrated, make some motions, yeah. But I wanna graduate with my classmates. I know that some of them, they're not gonna be there, but we're, we're working hard to get there. And while point or another, we're strong, we're brave, because we're gonna, we're not gonna crush those dreams. We are not. Because we're important, even if we don't have the same, we don't have the same, if we're Hispanic or anything. Many are supporting us, and I'm thankful for that, but what about you all? We need your help, we wanna get there, we wanna succeed in life. It's hard, I know, math is hard. I know it is, because it's always been there for me, like, math, math, since I was in kindergarten, I've been struggling. Many people just don't get it. And I know that because I was like that, like, since I was in kindergarten anyhow, it's hard for me. But we're working hard because we want a better life, we wanna support our families. We just wanna be somebody one day, and for people to accept us, for who we are.
Okay, Christina Ambrori?
Good evening, Dr. Nishino and fellow board members. I am here on behalf of, um, my fellow classmates that are not going to be graduating, or most likely will not graduate. I appreciate what Dr. Johnson and Mr. Mespin have done to help us. I don't believe it is fair that we have to meet these standards when this whole time we were unprepared for it. I'm not saying that we are not ready and that we can't do it. I'm sure if we were prepared correctly, we would be able to do it, and we would succeed, and be exactly where you guys want us to. Unfortunately, that is not the case. And a lot of students are fighting. As you can see tonight, they're here because, for a reason, they wanna prove a point. To graduate is not just a piece of paper as was implied. It's important to a lot of students to graduate because it really does mean something to them. Whether they go to a college or not, that is up to them, as you have, as some of you have said. I personally, I am in Algebra II, and I am passing. Math hasn't always been a struggle for me, but one thing I would like to bring up is English, because it has been difficult for me. I'm a good writer, but reading is my biggest challenge. For the past two years, including this year, I have been placed in a college prep class, and this year it has been really difficult for me. I don't understand how I can be placed in this higher level English if I barely passed the previous courses. I, because I barely passed in the previous years, I did go to B.C., and I took the time to take this class there, so I can improve. I got an A in the class. When I started school, I figured it would be easier, and I would at least pass my English class with a B. Unfortunately, that's not the case, and I already have a D in English. I am not prepared for this class, and I felt that I would have been. We are not offered an English class, and I don't, a regular English class, and I don't understand why that is. Because I, I know for a fact I am not the only student struggling in English. And I really hope that you guys understand that we're not trying to take the easy way out, and we're not trying to just get this paper to say that we have it. It really does mean something to us, and if it didn't, we would not be here tonight. And we wouldn't be here taking the time out of our days to make sure we get what we need. Graduation is important for many reasons. And I just hope you realize that this is very important to each and every single one of us. And we all have a tough time in something, and I'm sure you all can relate. And that's all.
I don't wanna put it out there, but that's my daughter.
Okay, Lynn, I saw yours somewhere.
Yeah.
Good evening, um, superintendents and board members. Um, I hope you have seen tonight, if you could have come. I'm not asking to not be challenged, they're asking to be prepared. And I think it's really important, the data that Juan shared, that if no senior passed the class, the test that shows they're prepared for Algebra, that means there's a systemic delay. That means somewhere along the line, we're not doing our job as educators to be sure these kids are totally prepared for what we're giving them. And I would ask that you think before making drastic changes, at the possible consequences, because now we have, if you do choose to change and incorporate other classes, we now have one quarter of the year that these kids have lost in the curriculum, whatever curriculum they would go into. And does that mean they'll be expected to complete a year within three quarters? Or that means that they won't get as much in the three quarters? Will their grade, let's say they're flunking Algebra, will that carry over to the next grade? There are a lot of questions that people don't know, and parents are, there are lots of rumors flying everywhere. There's been no statement, no specific statement gone out to the parents, or to the community, or something like that. And I'd like to applaud Virginia for making sure that, um, Spanish was included, because we have in most audiences, people who only speak Spanish. And I would suggest most groups have the translation available, so it doesn't interfere, you don't have to double translate. You just have people, if most people speak Spanish, the English speakers wear their earphones. If most people speak English, the Spanish speakers use the earphones. It doesn't interrupt, and it makes, it sends a message that you care about everyone and all parents, and including in the curriculum, and decisions. So, that's my second thing. And my third thing is I want to offer, the Spanish is at the bottom, the English is on the top, that is not allegorical, please. And, um, we are having an open house at the One Step Center. And one of the reasons I retired, and I'm doing the job I'm doing now, is because as a principal, I saw all, so many limitations that were placed on me that I wanted to have happen. And so, we have math support. Jessica, who spoke so eloquently, is a math tutor at the One Step Center. We're not getting a penny from anyone from the district. We would love to have some of that one-time-only money, so that we then could provide some staffing to really support kids. We have a whole bank of computers. I want to thank, uh, Mr. Johnson, who I worked with, who, um, offered to send a tutor, come to high school, come to school district down, and have kids work on the computer at the One Step. So, I would like to join with you in supporting the youth. We have that program available, I'd like to do that together, and I'd support those of you who are interested in doing that. So, please, look at the systemic changes. It's not, the kids should not be the consequence of So please, look at the systemic changes. It's not, the kids should not be the consequence of poor systemic preparation. Here's some invitations and I hope you all come on Saturday to our open house and bring your checkbooks.
Hello, members. I'm not very good at public speaking, so bear with me. My daughter, Christina, of course, my husband spoke earlier. I'm the first person to push her beyond, as far as she can go. It's heartbreaking to hear your story. Because I've heard my daughter come to me and she was intense in life. She said, "Mom, there's not enough help. I'm struggling with this. I'm not a graduate." So I can't help her. But I always tell her, you know, you've got to find your resources. Find kids in your class, find, you know, is there any programs out there? It's very limited. But still I push her. Still, I, I put it on her, like, "You can do it. You've got to do it." I take pride in how far she's come. And I'm glad that you guys are changing this for them. I get that back that, you know, it was a broken system and you guys are trying to fix it. But it shouldn't apply to these kids right now. You guys got to start it from, you know, ninth grade. You can't just, I mean, like I said, I want the best for her. I know she needs it. I get that. But, I mean, I'd, I'd do anything to support that. But who's going to sit there and help all these kids if you pass that? Who's going to sit there and put those extra hours for them? To give them the assistance they need, to catch them up in the system that left them behind? I, like I said, I'm a parent that would do anything. We drove Monday through Thursday to venture, sat there for hours to bring her, to catch her up, to give her that extra step that she needed. I don't really listen to her complain as much because I always think, you know, kids always complain. But hearing her get so upset and so passionate about this and hearing all the kids come by the house and they're all talking about it and how it affects them and it's heartbreaking. So that's why I'm here today, to ask that you guys, you know, commend you for setting the bar higher. But don't push it on the kids who are going to have to break their backs to try to make it. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Nashina and school board. I'm handing out two pages to you and the attached copy is, the attached is a copy of the presentation I made on May 14th of this year, when I outline, we're missing one. Now you okay? The attached copy is a copy of the presentation I made on May 14th of this year when I outline the repercussions of the primary senior school enrollment out for two regarding of their preparation or ability. These repercussions have come to tax. And we see the students here tonight who are doing a great job. Thank you for coming. The school administrators have recently recognized the problems and are now adding a consumer math class. Now, with the first quarter nearly complete, some FOMO High School students will have their schedules changed once again, perhaps for the sixth time. Number two, I'm formally requesting in person and in writing that the issues of mathematics be placed on the next agenda, including topics listed below, but not excluding other math-related topics. I request that this discussion be arranged early on the agenda so that students and parents at FOMO High School will be present for the discussion. Two years ago, when the graduation requirements changed, the discussions did not start until late in the evening when most of the parents and kids had left. A, offer more courses for ninth through 12 students, including general math and pre-algebra classes for special ed students who are not prepared yet for general education math. Offer pre-algebra to students who are not ready for algebra. Add consumer career math. Make it a rigorous course. B, analyze the performance of the ninth grade math students, specifically those in Algebra II. Has the philosophy of pushing students forward been successful? Look at the multiple measures. Look at the UCLA placement tests, the CSTs, the benchmark assessments. C, analyze the performance of all math students who have been moved forward to the next level of math with a D in Algebra I. Again, has the philosophy of pushing students forward been successful? Look at the multiple measures. Analyze the performance of the eighth grade students who completed Algebra I and seventh grade. These students are considered the cream of the crop. They should be scoring advanced in math and they are not. With basic scores in Algebra I, these students will not be prepared for advanced mathematics such as calculus. They won't make it. E, use multiple measures to determine students' placement in math courses. Three, in the fall of 2009, FOMO High School had 1,137 students enrolled and it now only has 1,010. Where did 127 students go? That is more than 10% of the school population. That is what that is. Four, the school board agenda which is placed on the website should include supporting documents. The minutes should be comprehensive. Without these pieces, the information on the website is incomplete, ambiguous, confusing, and uninformatory. Five, change the night of the school board meeting so that it does not conflict with the city council meeting. Community members and the press should not have to choose between a school board meeting and a city council meeting. Six, voting in public and the appearance of impropriety. When the school board routinely has an unanimous vote on issues, it appears that they are discussing the vote in closed session, which is a violation of the Brown Act. It is in the best interest of the students, staff, and community that each board member feels free to vote his or her beliefs and their conscience clearly. The position of each individual board member should be conveyed to the public. The other thing I would like to address that I didn't write down is that when I speak to students as a high school counselor, they are pushed into the most difficult courses that they can handle. And I don't make the decision on what they handle. We get the recommendations from the staff members. At the turn between their junior and senior year, we are now looking at, am I pushing them in the most difficult thing? Or am I working towards them just getting through if they are a DNF student and constantly retaking classes? There's a philosophical question there. Would I like everybody to be in the most difficult classes possible? Have I ever told somebody that they can't do it? The answer is that's no. But I say to them, and last year is a good example, I had kids, you know what? Take Algebra II, I think you can do it. "I don't think I can do it, Mrs. Ashen." Take it. "No, no, I want to be in Math and algebra," which was the math class we gave to seniors last year. So I had probably eight kids doubling old. A lot of them stopped the Math and Algebra second semester and continued in Algebra II. That way, they had the support, they knew they were going to meet their math requirement, but I pushed them to keep going. And I think that every counselor at FOMO High School that I have worked with has had that belief. I don't know why Ms. Meskwa said what she did. But I wasn't her counselor. But I will tell you that, and Jessica's a perfect example, and some of these other younger kids, who I didn't work with the seniors last year, with the, with the, these kids until last year. And at that time, I was working predominantly, you know, we worked to get the seniors out. So, that is the philosophy that we have had at FOMO High School, is you push the kids and you push the kids and you push the kids and then you make sure they're going to graduate because their parents are more concerned that they walk across the stage and they get that diploma. Maybe they haven't met the Algebra II requirement because they're not ready for it, but they can do that at the community college. If you take that diploma away from them, you have harmed them for life. Getting them out the door with the diploma and getting them into the community college or the Marine Corps or whatever other chosen field is, that is far better than not at passing Algebra II and not graduating.
Thank you, Mary. To all speakers. With that, we'll move on to consent items.
Dave, before we move on, let me comment. I, I don't, I don't know if all of you understand that we cannot respond to your comments as make them.
Board members aren't supposed to comment.
We're not supposed to comment. Our, our hands are tied. Goes back to what Ms. Ashen was talking about, the Brown Act. But I do want to emphasize, each and every one of us up here are individuals. We are not yes people. We don't bow to anyone. I don't bow to him, he does not bow to me or any of us others here. We're all independent thinkers. We have our own philosophies. I will do everything I can to persuade him to see my point of view or her or her or him. So it's, I have to be very emphatic that we are not yes people. We don't say yes to the superintendent. We don't say yes to the assistant superintendent or these other two gentlemen. In fact, we challenge them. It's our job to make them better than what they are, just like the teachers and the counselors and the principals at your schools are there to try to make you, not try. It's their job to make you a better person. Academically and socially and as a citizen. That is very, very important that I want you all to understand. But we cannot comment on what has been said. The last thing I want to say is, there are, some people might say it's not aligned, but I will say it anyway. There are four Mexicans on this board. We're not Puerto Rican, we are not Cuban, we are not Central American, we are not South American, we are not Spanish. Rangel, Prado, Granica, De La Pierna.
And my wife thinks I meant that.
And we got one, uh, we have our one token here on the board.
Honorary, honorary.
But just, just keep that in mind. We all have Mexican roots. Both my mother and father were, they used to call themselves fruit bums. Back in the 1930s, in the 1920s, they followed the crops. From Santa Paula to Casta, to San, uh, to Fresno, across to San Jose and then back down to Santa Paula. They did that for over 15 years of their lives. So, and I know there's a lot of similar experiences here. We, we have farmworker parents. And I'm proud to say, soy mexicano, puro mexicano. I'm an American citizen first. I had to make that clear when I first got elected to the board back in 1994. Because we had issues of this sort. Back then, it was Chicano Studies versus Mexican-American Studies. And I made it clear to the audience back then and the parents back there that were pushing for Chicano Studies, look, I can't, maybe these people were not on the board, by the way, at that time. But I had to make it clear to them. I want Chicano Studies, but if I can't have Chicano Studies, we'll have Mexican-American Studies, but we're going to study the same thing that we would have studied in Chicano Studies. Because if I had a choice of being called Mexican, Mexican-American, Hispanic, Latino, and all those other fancy terms that they now use, my choice of identification was Chicano. And it's always been that way. But for political correctness and to make people happy and to smooth people's feelings, I'll say I'm Latino or Hispanic just to get them to understand, because even in this day and age, people don't understand the term Chicano itself. But that's okay. That's another time and another place. We're here as individual board members, individual thinkers, and we are not yes people. And to his credit, he makes sure that we try to abide by the Brown Act as much as we can. As often as we can.
Not always successful. As you're proving, as you are proving.
I, I had to, I had to make some points for you because, damn. The audience doesn't understand who we are.
Well, with that, I think we'll move on to item 13. Ten minute break.
We're going to take a ten minute break.
Ten minute, fifteen minute, twenty minute break. Anyway, we're going to move on to consent items. Anyway, we're going to find, we're going to move on to consent items. Any final questions? All right. Items on the, uh, considered agenda, considered review, and will be enacted by the senior members, and we're going to have a little discussion. If there are number or member of the audience requesting discussion, so we have items one through ten, and so I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
Some move.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Especially number seven.
Yeah. Is that all, that's what you came for?
Let's pull that one out.
That's a joke, man.
That's a joke, man.
Okay, so, uh, we have a first and a second. Is there any discussion? So Tony, I could go on and poke.
No, no, no. Kim doesn't have a chance.
Okay, anyway, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, Joe, we're not, you know.
Look at him going out.
If my wife wants a lunch, surprises, you're in good.
Yeah, yeah. Find out how come.
Find out money where you received it or not?
Oh, yeah.
Right, thank you. Okay, if I have one more on decay action items, approve, uh, certificate, uh, certification, the signatures. Some move. Okay, Lucy, okay, is there any discussion? I know what that is, is it moving to go over to, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to number twelve, approve Resolution Number Fifteen, Act One Hundred and Fourteen, Act O Three, regarding the sufficiency of textbooks or charter materials to the school year twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. School principals with plenty of reading?
No.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion.
Some move.
Lucy, second. Okay, please, thank you for a second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, is there any kind of discussion? No, I just, I just want to make sure that, um, because it mentions, um, I know the high school, they had a really bad batch of history books, where any of those can place, because I know two years ago there was hardly anything left, and I just wondered if history books, you know, or they still included that.
If there's been a request, we would address it. Every request that came to us, we address.
They must have patched them up pretty good then.
Lucy, well, Lucy, it also says that even though if we don't have sufficiency now, that we, that we by the end of the year, that's what we're certifying, so as long as you do your job, I think we're okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll entertain a second. I almost got to go in, so we'll ask you, all in favor?
Aye.
I was just going to say the same thing, so we don't, people don't put more rubber stamp.
So you want to argue next time? Okay, all right, so we'll move on to thirteen. Approve Resolution Thirteen, Act Fourteen, Act O Four, for the adoption of paper textbooks and instruction materials for the structured animation version program for the June year twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen. Some move. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Lucy, any discussion? Comment, each other, right? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the vote, zero. Okay, so then we're, to the, uh, meeting, uh, segment on seven hours, so guys look, the meeting, the, the next meeting will be on October fifteenth.
Okay, well, here's where I have a question, because there's valid concerns that have brought my attention, and also line.
Well, that's what Alan's saying. If you look at these, these dates, and I'm going to give you those dates, will allow people who want to do handball agreements in the off.
Here's the problem we had when we canceled, I guess, we had shit, because it was on two weeks in between. We did this before two years ago, but we did it, there was a three week one. There was three, three weeks between third and the next one. So, but we didn't have one now. So what we're going to do is if we go three weeks now, this is the twenty-fourth, if you don't do the first, we do the fifteenth of October, now we're back on schedule, to the next board meeting in November.
But, but we have.
That's a dark week.
We're dark on that weekend.
But I think we approved it in the overall meeting, too.
No, because when, when we take office in August December, and we, we schedule the meetings, and we schedule for the first and the third, um, Tuesdays of the month. Okay, so.
Can we go back to that?
Yeah, we can go back to that.
Yeah.
But we would schedule the fifteenth, if the first and the fifteenth was already a board meeting.
Right.
But we're changing, because we were back when I didn't show up, we changed the order, so we'll go back and correct that. So the fifteenth will be the second, when Tuesday of the month, right? So it's first and second, first, the first, Tuesday.
The first is the.
So the first Tuesday and the third Tuesday.
So the first Tuesday in October is the first, every Tuesday.
So that's one week, we're not going to make it generally, because it is now twenty-fourth.
And then we have the eighth, and.
So we're, we're not going to do the eighth, because the fifteenth, so that's past the fifteen weeks now.
Oh, we're changing the eighth to the fifteenth.
And it'll be one, two, the third, we'll be back on November, uh.
November the fifteenth is our.
I'm not allowed, I'm gone, so, I mean, if you're changing the dates, you're going to.
You're not where?
I'm, I'm on vacation now.
Where, where?
The fifteenth, the week of the fourteenth.
Okay, then you want to keep, one more time, people, one more time, for the eighth.
Okay, so we're going to.
On for the eighth.
On for the eighth.
Okay, okay, now the next one, what's the next one?
I'm confused now.
Okay, we're on for the eighth.
I got one.
Okay, so let me, let me see if I can restate it out. Okay, so originally, we're all in agreement that the first and the third Tuesday are not, are going to go back.
Yes.
But for October, because you don't, a week, is there enough time just to do it? You're suggesting that the board adopted for the eighth.
Right.
And then because the fifteenth would be again, a week later, and we're dark, you're suggesting that we go to the twenty-second?
That was the reason how we.
That's why we set it up that way.
Okay, so that's, that's what I have on the agenda.
Okay, that's right, that'd work. The only thing is, I don't know, maybe Dave wanted to be here for the eighth.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm going to.
You won't be here, okay, so.
That's okay, you already said that, so.
They're being ordered, right, Scott?
Okay, so we're to the eighth, to the twenty-second, then we're back to the fifth, and then nineteenth, November.
Correct.
Okay, then we'll write that on.
So the first meeting, that, our next meeting will be on the eighth.
Eighth, October eighth.
And then after that?
October eighth, October twenty-second, November fifth, November nineteenth. Those are the dates.
Okay.
All right, any comments, any concerns, whether the yardage is okay?
Yes. Are we in there?
Uh? We're heading for, yeah. Yeah, we're, okay, we're going to get there. Okay, good. Okay, well, we're very settled, and we'll move on to item N, board closing comments, three. Yeah, okay, and again, so Jenny will get you up here, but you got nothing? Hey, Ron?
Nothing.
And Tony?
No, I was just going to comment that, uh, if, I don't know if any of you have ever watched the Conejo Board meetings, but they're, I, I've watched a couple, for a few minutes. They're very interesting, because when they, uh, they, when they make a motion, they say, Mr. President, uh, like number twelve, I approve Resolution Number Third, blah, 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 blah.
And they repeat it again?
Yeah.
I like our method much.
Oh, I know.
I was obvious.
This is parliamentary procedure.
It is parliamentary procedure. The other, the other thing is, uh, they were explaining on a, on an overhead, the, the monies that we're going to be getting, uh, supposedly in the future. And there was an interesting comment made, because they said, oh, schools like Fillmore and Santa Paula are going to get something in the twelve thousand dollar range per student. And thus, over here, Kanan, one, Old Park, only, only get five or six thousand dollars per student. So that, well, and what I'm getting at is the way they presented it, and.
I'll correct one.
I'll take your two hundred fifty six thousand dollar.
They had it set up really good, it was really easy to understand. So, again, if you ever want, if you want, no, no, I'm just saying, if you ever want some interesting information as to what goes on with the state and, uh, whatever, their, their board meetings are very light.
You know, go to the back.
Where?
I'll have it here, too.
No, they, they come, I think, they got stories.
Anyway, okay.
Lucy, any other comment?
No, um, I noticed on our website that, uh, the back to school night for elementary schools, it just has Mountain Vista, MB on there, and there's nothing that says on there.
Michael sent us an email.
Oh, I know they are, but I'm talking about the community, or whatever, if they check our website, it just has MB for Mountain Vista. It doesn't say that all elementary schools have their back to school night, so.
What, let's go, we got to get to one, you know, you got to set that, oh, we're set.
Because some, some people aren't taking that.
Yeah, more, more, that's good, I mean, you can get in there, you can get, it's good. So let's.
And so the elementary ones are this Thursday, correct? And I already requested a parking space, or already promised me a parking space if I go, so. Do you hear that, principals out there? Victor already offered to have a parking space for these.
If you see it, just park right behind it.
All right, I'll block it.
Safe spot.
Hey, pitch where you live.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Just, just one question, I know we're, I think, we had a comment, uh, not only put out in, in the Friday update about the, uh, the water situation, the reclaimed water that.
Yes, yes.
Um, one of the, I, I had a comment about the state of the grass out there, that apparently it's in really, really horrible condition, so hopefully that will be addressed as well in, in, in that report.
Is that part of it? Yeah, we, we will. We're, we're going to talk about, you know, it's, it's going to be an interesting, it's a long, how many, three years now?
Oh, no, it's been, it's been forever, yeah. I mean, the, the design was back from the beginning, you know, until.
It's been what, four years?
It was about the second year that Jeff was here, I think.
Well, definitely doesn't work, we told them that, and so, well, we'll, we'll work on that.
The last comment?
Yeah.
I just want to thank Michael for the, thanks for the presentation. And really, well, compassionate.
No, impassioned.
Well, yeah, and compassionate, but also at the same time, very direct, that's what I like. Letting them know, I, I, I know they felt it out there, and to a degree, some of them didn't like it. That's the reality.
I thought you did a good job, too, and I may be thankful about what your services must be worth. But that's good. Okay, are you, you're done, Tony? Or Lucy, you said you had nothing? Okay, I, I did, uh, meet with the Ag Advisory Council, and there's a lot of stuff going on. And of course, you know how well the, uh, Ag program did with the, uh, with the fair, but there, there's a grant coming in, but there's some kind of things getting in the way for now, as we're going to provide money for a lot of things. But one of the things I wanted to bring up is that they're thinking about putting some classrooms out there, but the big thing is the, uh, is the, I don't know what you would call it, I guess, natural habitat?
Yes, restoration.
Restoration natural habitat that they're working on out there, and, uh, I think that would really be cool, and it would look really nice, too, and, uh, maybe one of these days, you might be able to share something about what's going to happen out at the farm, because there's a lot of ideas being generated, but I don't want to jump on a horse, or let the horse go without jumping on it, you know, to get on it yet, so. Anyway, I'll kind of reserve that for a, a later time, but, uh, anyway, there's some other ideas, too, but it went real well, and then Joe shared some things about what his kids are going to be doing in the near future, and, uh, even, things are really, a lot to report now, but things are moving.
I'm just picking back on that, like, thank you, Ellen, because I know you brought all that together. Because I attended that meeting prior to this, and to bring them together to do that habitat.
We have a lot of people working with me, Bob, and Michael Glenn, and Cynthia, and Laura Torres, so, we have a lot of good people here, so. And Bobby, Laura, she's actually a grandma, she's really out. But I have one other master, this is number one, today, I got to meet the board member from Ventura, who came to check on our application for the Golden Gella Award, CSPA Times Award. He came out, you want to say a, a few words, Cynthia, how, how, how was he, how was he, pretty impressed?
He, yes, Mr. Walker came out and actually, he toured our facility, and I gave him a tour of our environmental science class, which is the habitat. And he was able to see our students in action, our students studying, um, what was the topic for today? They were studying bugs, but there's a technical term for it, and.
Etymology.
And more, and so they were looking at the species as well, and so he had an opportunity to have a discussion with the students, and then he spoke with, uh, Mr. Subi, he also spoke with Michael Johnson, he spoke with Michael Glenn, and then I even had Deputy Vasquez out there, because we needed him to see that this has also increased attendance, and it's brought down tagging and violence, and he was extremely impressed, and then from there, we took off to the school farm, and then discussed what you were talking about, Mr. Wild, it, how this project has grown to three different sides. We discussed the habitats at both Piru and San Kaitama, and the fact that our students are serving as mentors, not only for the students, uh, but creating leadership roles for our students. So, we will achieve when you raise the bar, and when you do provide opportunities for students to learn through project-based learning, because there's so much support, and so I was very, very happy to have him come by, and John, he sent his regards, and then he stopped by to, uh, Dr. Nishinell's office, and was very, very happy that we have that district-level support, which is important, in making sure that this program continues, and it's, it's a sustainable program, not just a one and done. But I'll let you finish the conversation, Dr. Nishinell.
Well, no, I was just, he was really impressed and kind, definitely, I, I don't really, what we're doing, but for John, but he, instead of my, but he's done. So, and, uh, I think that it's something that we should truly be proud of, and the amount of work, people think this stuff like this doesn't happen. It's not that easy. And you have to have a teacher like Laura Torres, who's going to step up, become Ventura County teacher, the able-bodied first. I think we're going to get the Golden Book, the Golden Book, the Golden Gella Award, which will be a first and strong one, and I think it's good that we hit it on the map. And, uh, so I, I thank you very much for all your hard work, thank your staff as well, because it takes everybody in that community to do the things that we do. So thank you, staff and folks.
And Bob, this is, this is Bob's, he hates when I do this, but you know.
So when she gets ready to become my staff.
I know, and so I just want people to understand that what Bob does, and even Mr. Walker said this, he goes above and beyond his role, it's not just, let me move the pilot, or, it's, let's talk about how our students can learn, and how can we create a project from this idea? And it's something that has evolved into our program, we have students that are interning now with the United States Department of Fish and Wildlife, they're taking about careers in teaching, careers in the science field, and that's what we need to keep, is, is creating opportunities for our students, so. Sorry, Bob, I had to do it again.
The point is going to be the STEM project, Bob gets really excited, that we're going to have classes here, we're going to have teachers from UCSP, CSU Channel Islands, and now Cal U for, is in contact with us, and we can hopefully get a STEM project out there. You know, science, technology, engineering, mathematics, because people are really interested in the topic. So I'm really, really, we may have to expand advantage to be Sierra High School, may end up being an expanded version for the high school also to be involved in.
Uh, Laura Torres is working closely with, um, I forget the name of the science teacher, but Fillmore.
Laurie Barrow. Oh, at the high school, I mentioned it, because Laurie mentioned that she's working with Laurie.
She's working with her, Laura has outreach to every teacher in, in each school site, and each school site, uh, has sent a teacher who is now being trained, and so each quarter, we will have more teachers coming on board, and then it's, it's, so that it's sustainable. And it's not just our program at Sierra High School, it's providing opportunities for the other ones, and it's actually a longitudinal study of, of, uh, the environment. So these third graders from your schools.
I think we had, we had five or six teachers from Sacagawea.
Oh, yeah, we did, and actually, Don Glover also had teachers from his site. So, um, it's a long-term study, so that these students can then continue to go back to the river area and, and, and research what has their plant done? Were the species still there? What does the environment look like, and they're rapping it out, so it's not just that one-year project, it's over in K-12.
Sacagawea's, um, grant just got, um, Bob was just telling us today, and what were you saying, Bob, that it's, uh, I think it got fully funded?
Fully funded, that's what I was told, said, here.
By the state?
Uh, by the pedestrian wildlife thing, yeah.
So we don't know about the grant yet, the hundred and sixteen thousand dollars.
No, we find out in January.
That's a big, that's the strategic plan on how we can convert a hundred-year and a five-hundred-year flood, and what we can do with that farm. So, of course, a lot of people on the farm, but they don't trust those guys, they don't trust the government. And the government comes in and says, you know, we're the government, trust us. We're here to help. So, uh, so, yeah, so, well, we'll see, I think if we can do the strategic plan, alleviate any more opportunities for the flood, the white power stuff, that it can buy itself, is amazing. I'm really excited about, uh, Cynthia Davis, she is Bobby, they have really, Bobby has taken on, how many jobs has she taken on? Has she migrated?
No, no. No, she's ELD.
She's ELD?
ELD, and a farm.
And a farm, on top of teaching, and working.
And she's happy.
She's excited. Is she?
Okay, she is.
Speaking of floods, uh, I was asked last working with my other board to bring back some information about, uh, the evacuation emergency procedures, and I missed my chance, so if you don't mind, I can go over a little briefly now.
Horace, can I ask a question before I shut my brain, because it's getting a little small as I get older? I was out, I was out visiting, uh, Piru Elementary today, before I, you know, found, or actually, she found me. Diane, I was talking to Raymond Barrera, and I was, I was thinking about, okay, the kids are going to hike up the hill, but where are they going to hike up the hill?
There's a, the northwest corner of the property by the, the farm.
Yeah, he's asking where that road went, but he didn't know whether there was access to the fence that was up there.
Yeah, there's a gate, there's a double gate up there in the corner, that they can get through.
Diane's got the key. Just make it so Diane's got the key.
Yeah.
Anyway, I was referring with, uh, the fire department and Captain McGrath today, that depending on what the emergency is, and where it's coming from, uh, an example would be if there's a dam break and it's flooding, well, first, it's going to wash away the one-twenty-six, you're not going to have to worry about trapping. But, uh, and nobody's going to be driving into it, so there's not going to be, you know, but they'll start on the east end of town and work their way and make sure everybody's safe, and put their first bar, it would be, uh, Mountain Vista, or Rio Vista, and get them over to San Kaitama. Uh, if it's on the west end, let's say a hazardous spill of some sort, and then west wind's blowing this way, they'll start at that end and work their way this way, and so it depends on what the emergency is, but they won't let the kids.
Then for the.
Yeah, it's, it won't be all kids for themselves.
Be our teachers for themselves.
So anyway, I just.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. All right, no other comments? Uh, entertain a motion, and you're moving?
Yeah.
What's that?
No, close session.
I think so, I have.
Okay, so, close, okay, so I'm, I'm moving, don't, uh, adjourn the regular meeting and go into close session.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.